Latest updates for what's going on in town. The following projects are under review. A new 7-11 convenience store with gas pumps to be located at the southwest corner of Dairy Road and US 1. Hendrickside Care, a 2,720 square foot medical office located at 300 Cheney Highway. Verona Villages A&amp;E, which will feature 339 single-family homes and 126 townhomes in the Verona subdivision along Grissom Parkway. Two Garden Street apartment buildings with five units each at 1,600 Garden Street. And an amenity center at the Shores Delation Drive. Plans have been approved or site permits have been issued for the following projects. A 96,000 square foot Titusville Assisted Living Facility to be located on Silver Star Road. A Mavis Tire and Brake Retail Store to be located in the St. John's Plaza on Garden Street next to Harbor Freight. A 44-unit Tropic Apartments Complex to be located at the corner of South Singleton Avenue and Tropic Street. A four-unit Palmetto Apartment Complex to be located east of Titusville Apartments to be located at the corner of Fox Lake Road and South Street. A new airport tower at Space Coast Regional Airport. A 6,000 square foot addition to the Futuramic Manufacturing Building at 2210 Garden Street. A HydroSaurus Brewery at 502 Josephine Street. A Heartland Dental Office to be located at 2035 Cheney Highway. 36 Palmetto Ridge condominium units at 915 Sprout Lane. And a 12,000 square foot True Hotel to be located on Helen Hauser Boulevard. Construction is underway on the following projects. 91 Odyssey Ridge Townhomes to be located along Sisson Road. The Pier 13 Retail Coffee Shop and Roasting Facility at 1391 North Washington Avenue. Phase one of Titusville Resort and Destination, which will include a hotel and restaurant spaces to be located at 3550 South Washington Avenue. A new 620,000 square foot Lockheed Martin Manufacturing and Warehouse Building at 1103 John Glenn Boulevard. A new Chase Bank located at 2035 Cheney Highway. Milrite Apartments, formerly known as Titusville Chance Partners, to be located along Columbia Boulevard. Phase one consists of 255 multifamily units in two buildings, while phase two will consist of 233 multifamily units in two more buildings. Falcon's Roost, a 28-lot multifamily home subdivision along Knox-McGray Drive. An event hangar for the Valiant Air Command at the Space Coast Regional Airport. Site improvements to the BP gas station on Garden Street, including parking lot renovations, invasive plant removal, and interior refurbishment. A 51,000 square foot TRG self-storage building with covered outdoor RV storage at 3960 South Street. And Huntington Park, an 86-unit multifamily home subdivision along South Park Avenue. For more information on any of the great topics mentioned here, along with feature articles such as sustainability practices of Space Coast Ceramics and New Vision, and all about red, white, and boom, check out the Talking Points Magazine at titusville.com/talkingpoints.
Alrighty, well, good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you here to the City of Titusville City Council Special Presentation Meeting on July 22, 2025 at 5:30. I'm going to call this meeting to order. If you would take a moment for the invocation with a moment of silence, please? Thank you very much. Please stand for the pledge.
The pledge of the United States of America and to the Republic, religious stance, one nation, under God, indivisible, the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. City Clerk?
This is a city council meeting to hear special pres- excuse me, special recognitions and presentations. Council will not take formal action on the agenda items. All individuals wishing to speak may do so under petitions and requests. No sign-up card is required. Citizens being submitted to city council shall be placed in the box on the table.
Thank you very much, City Clerk. City Manager, do we have a quarrel?
Yes, we do.
Thank you very much, and the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First item on the agenda is Employees of the Month, and for June 2025, we have one of our IT network analysts, Mr. Justin Wells, has been selected Employee of the Month. And to present that award, his supervisor, Justin Kenny.
Yes, both Justins are here today. Okay. This is a great award to be giving out this evening because it was actually not presented by me. It was one of the other employees of the city, which is always a great feeling for supervisor to have. And it states, "Justin Wells doesn't just do his job as a PC network specialist well, he excels and exceeds expectations. The excellence lies in his proactive approach to problem solving and the willingness to go the extra mile to address issues with Justin that really don't make sense and cannot be replicated on demand, and Justin listens and never dismisses a concern. Justin will then do research to try and solve the problem if it comes up again. I find this work ethic refreshing and really appreciate the willingness to be proactive, the consistent follow-ups, and overall great customer service. Justin Wells exemplifies a great employee and should be recognized as Employee of the Month for the City of Titusville." Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Oh, how do we do this?
Now, for July Employee of the Month, we have Sue Williams, our CRA planner. And to present that award, we have Brad Parish, our Community Development Director.
I'm really happy that Sue was approved for this. Sue Williams consistently brings fresh and creative ideas to the table. She's been a pleasure to work with the past couple of years with us. She came to us from New Smyrna, so she came to us with a lot of experience from there, and it's really helped us out. I'm just going to read some of this here that I submitted. "In an effort to foster collaborative spirit in downtown, Sue personally visited each business owner and introduced herself to property owners and made sure everyone knew to contact her with any questions. She organized community meetings, presented information on several significant ongoing projects in the downtown, and helped businesses navigate local grants. She strives to ensure businesses utilize the local incentives to help maintain properties and enhance their image. Her efforts help foster grassroots efforts to organize events and bring visitors back to the downtown. She has established a rapport with all the business owners and property owners in the downtown, and the city is, you know, the city could not have selected a better candidate. Thank you. She always has a great idea to move forward on, and I'm really happy that she was able to get this."
Thank you.
The next item, as you're aware, that we have two unions, firefighters and police officers, and both the unions are currently in negotiations with the city on the next round of contract talks. So, we're going to go ahead and have our HR director give a brief on the introduction to the collective bargaining process, and also talk about pay plan and step issues and any other questions that council wants to know about how we compensate our employees. So, without further ado, I'll turn it over to Mr. De Naro.
Thank you. Wow, there's some high expectations. Meet those expectations. Good evening, Mayor, council members. PowerPoint presenting to you this evening, an overview of collective bargaining, and then we'll have a summary of our pay plan. I'm going to give a very high overview of our pay plan and the-
Yeah, Joe, you definitely cleared out the room. I don't think that's indicative of your presentation.
Oh, yeah, I know. That's all right. I don't, I don't take it personally.
The one thing I would ask-
I don't take it personally.
The one thing I would ask, if you could, is just make sure you stay close to the mics.
Okay, so, the major sections of collective bargaining are referred to in Chapter 447 of the Florida statutes. That gives the constitutional right to organize, to the public employees, and to the right to engage in collective bargaining, and prohibit strikes by the public employees. The three major components of, of the law consist of the public employees whereby the commission protects the rights of employees and protects the rights of the employer, allows collective bargaining, and the election of representations, and oversees those particular elections. Perks' role also provides for magistrates or special masters in the event that the parties come to. Let's start with the creation of the Public Employees Relations Commission. It's a quasi-judicial body. There are three commissioners, three full-time members. They serve four-year terms. The commissioners represent typically, they're chosen from an employee if they've had some practice in the employee. There is also a commissioner that typically has had their practice representing employer relations, and then the chair oversees the Public Employees Relations Commission. The Public Employees Relation Commission gives the right to participate in elections for those representative, for those earlier certifies the union elections. The commission does not take part in any of the collective bargaining. That's between the employer and the representatives of the employee unions. The chief executive officer, in this case, is the city manager who represents the city's position in bargaining, and oversees the management team typically made up of the operating departments, particularly those managers and directors who oversee those departments. The HR director is the chief negotiator, and has the purpose of presenting the proposals and the position that represents the employer. Recommends the, city manager recommends the contract for ratification after, represents the employer in, in, in impasse proceedings. So, the significance of the legislative body, that's in this case, it's city council. City council provides overall direction and guidance to the chief executive officer in the contracts, and serves as the legislative body in the event there's a disagreement during an impasse in bargaining, and is declared unresolved at the table. Ultimately, those impasse issues come back to the city council for resolution. As I stated earlier, the legislative body is the city council. So, how does the process work? Okay? Section 447 sets forth the public employer's right to determine services that's delivered to the citizens. Sets forth the right of the employer to determine the size of the operating department, for example, and determines the FTE count with respect to the, to the size of, of, of those departments. But also, in terms of the services that are provided, those are the rights of the public employer. Notwithstanding that, the public employer has the right to determine unilaterally what I refer to as the size of the departments, the FTEs. However, those sets of standards in terms of the services are restricted in terms of the ask for more pay, have a right to ask for less hours. So, wages and hours and working conditions have to be negotiated. Those are not to be determined unilaterally. For example, the city may determine the number of police officers that that department has to serve the community. However, the, the wages of those police officers are what's negotiated. So, once an agreement is reached, the city manager designee on behalf of, of the public employer will tentatively agree to what has been negotiated at the table. Those agreements are then, are given to the employee organization who vote on it, who ratify that tentative agreement. And then, once the employee organization ratifies the agreement, then that agreement is brought to the legislative body of the council for ultimately ratification. Now, when it, when that agreement is brought to you, you have one decision to make. Either you accept or approve the collective bargaining agreement as was negotiated at the table, or you reject it. There are no conditions whereby you would select one article or one issue over another and approve that and, and, and move forward. So, the contract is written, is either accepted or rejected in its entirety. So, let's talk about executive session for, for a moment. It's required by law, and this is an opportunity for the city council to conduct candid and open discussions with the management team. It's a time for developing and agreeing on strategy between city manager and the legislative These sessions are closed to the public. The executive session can occur at any time during the period of negotiations, during an existing contract, preparing for negotiations, during actual and impending negotiations. You see that section for insulated period, we'll talk a little bit about that. Those are, that's a time where session or session outside of the sunshine is prohibited. Now, I'll get into it a little bit about how and when that occurs. So, when all else fails, the parties come to impasse, and any one of the parties, whether it's the employee organization, the employer organization, can declare impasse. And that occurs when an agreement is not reached at the table. So, there are certain provisions whereby a, an agreement or an impasse can be resolved. And we go back, who at their disposal have a list of mediators or arbitrators, and then either one of the parties can request from Perks, the Public Employees Relations Commission, a list of those mediators who will serve to make recommendations in terms of resolving the impasse. The proceeding or the recommendation of the special magistrate is non, is non-binding, unless both parties agree to the bypass. The final decision at impasse is ultimately you all as the council members. So, while the impasse is occurring, it's an important point to maintain confidentiality of the executive sessions and avoid improper contact on impasse during the insulated period. So, this, I think this is a good time to talk about the insulated period. So, when the part, let's go through the option of selecting a mediator or an arbitrator to come and help resolve the impasse. The special magistrate will make recommend, after a hearing, will make special recommendation to relieve the impasse. That recommendation will be served on both parties. Both parties will have an opportunity to review those recommendations and come to some decision where that could be, if, if they both agree on the recommendations of the, of the magistrate, that could resolve the impasse. However, if one party does not agree, then the, of the, of the particular magistrate then goes to the city manager who makes a recommendation to the legislative body on how to resolve the impasse issues. Once those recommendations are made by the exec, by the city manager to the legislative body, that's one of the times in which the insulated period occurs, and the legislative body is no longer permitted to have an executive session. That's one component of, of that insulated period. There is an option for both parties to waive the special master and go directly to the legislative body, and in that case, then the insulated period occurs at that point, and we can no longer have executive sessions at that point. So, once the bypass issue or impasse issues are brought to the city council, the city council will take such, such action as to believe to be in the best interest of the employer and the employees and the citizens. This, I mean, talked a little bit about the, the, the time in which you, as the legislative body is, is conferred to make a rec, a decision on the impasse, this is where you switch your hats. If you can think through, at the time that we were, you were in executive session, giving your guidance to the management team, at that point, you have given those guidance, but now you have to switch your hat at an impasse meeting to make a decision on resolving the impasse, and that's where the tricky part of your, your role as switching your hat to resolving the impasse is, is, is very important, that you show no biases or prejudices, particularly those that were discussed at the, at the executive session. So, that's an important hat that you all wear, and it's a very difficult one in, in terms of resolving the impasse after you've gone through executive sessions. So, I'm going to take any questions that you have before we get into the pay plan.
I don't see any, Mr. De-
Okay. Thank you.
Member Stokel?
Sorry, more of a point of clarification. So, I think, member Nelson and I, I think through our tenure of eight years, I think we went to impasse once in there, and I'm trying to recall what that process looked like. I don't think we had a mediator come in during our process. I, just for those that weren't on council. So, typically what happens, we kind of stay out of it during council, like, they negotiate, HR director, fire chief, police chief, and we don't really see that. So, they're doing that. What comes next typically is if you guys are going back and forth and you, there's some kind of issue, then they invite us in for, and correct me if I'm misspeaking. Then we're invited in for these shade meetings where it's, we meet only with, like, HR director, leadership, and we're seeing what the city tells us, what they're presenting back to the union, and then nobody from the union is in these meetings. So, it's just, oh, this looks good, or this doesn't look good, or go back with this. So, we give them kind of direction. And then typically, we'll work it out. One time, it didn't get worked out, and I don't think we chose the voluntary mediator. I don't think we went to a special magistrate, or I think we just did impasse. And so, the difference for me for that, and as Joe's saying, how you kind of have to switch your hats, during it, we're, we're having our discussion, what you're presenting, what they're saying. So, you're trying to figure out, okay, how does this work? Then when we're up here, we have both sides now presenting, so we're able to see both, and that's kind of where we take on that judge portion. So, I think that, yeah, is, is that correct?
No, you're absolutely right.
Okay, so I just wanted to clarify, because it's very- So, I just wanted to clarify, because it's very confusing if you haven't gone through it, to be like, okay, what, what happens here?
Correct.
So, and again, like I said, we've only had it once, but that's kind of how it works. So, it is a little bit different. We met several times, though. There was like, oh, wait, we need another shade meeting. Oh, wait, we need another shade meeting. So, it, it can be a little bit cumbersome, and that was only with fire, I believe. I don't think we've gone to impasse with police or launa, so.
No, you're absolutely right. And that's the, that's the tricky part, is to maintain that confidentiality that we've had in the executive sessions. And now, you're charged with the decision to make a decision at resolving the impasse without due respect to what was when, what we all talked about during that confidential meeting.
Yeah. And the other tricky thing that I learned, I, so we were in those, and so I had my paper out, I'm trying to do math and on there, and then they're like, okay, everything you just, like, turn it all in. Like, you can't take anything with you, and then, most importantly, you can't talk to anybody either during the union negotiation. So, that definitely was a new process, but I, I don't know. I feel like we're in a pretty good place now, so.
Okay. No, you're exactly right.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Mr. Dinaro?
Okay, sure. All right. So, our, get back to the PowerPoint. Let's, let's go on to the pay plan, and I just want to keep this at a summary and give you some of the components of what goes into the analysis of our, our pay plan. So, tried to list a number of features here, and we'll go into probably, well, I think it's a good idea that, I'll move on to the next slide. I don't know if y'all can see that. You probably see it better on your monitors. This is our pay plan as it exists today. As you can see, it's in hitting with the fire schedule, the fire classifications, those are position classifications associated with each grade. Those four sections of the fire department, as we've talked about in union negotiations, those employees are represented by the union, and the wages for, to determine the minimum for those positions. And those classifications are firefighter, EMT, paramedic, driver operator, and lieutenant. So, those are the situated classifications within the fire department. Okay? And as you can see, those are the minimum and maximums. Those are the spaces between the hiring range, which is the minimum, and the top out range, which is the maximum. The next column is the range spread, and at the time that this, this list was prepared, tried to demonstrate to you how many employees were in those classifications. Moving next, as we move down through the pay plan, we currently have service workers union. However, that contract expires September 30th of this year, and they have relations commission that they no longer feel that they're going to represent the service workers. So, our contract with the service workers will expire on September 30th. So, our challenge will be then, where you see that pay plan representing the service workers, is to incorporate those classifications within, and we'll work through that as we work through the budget year. The next set of alphanumeric grades are the non-union employees, and again, tried to give you an idea of how many employees are within those non, non-union classifications. The non-graded, you see a number of employees, 36 employees. Those are charter employees, city manager, city attorney, assistant city attorney. We have a number of our summer youth that are in that classification. We have a number of our crossing guards that are not within that pay classification. So, that's why you see that number, non-graded. And then, followed by the police union, police classifications, beginning with our dispatchers, our lead role of dispatchers, police officers, corporal sergeants, and lieutenants, all represented by the Fraternal Order of Police, and their minimums and maximums. You see that those are open-ended pay ranges. Those classifications have withstood three pay plan reviews that we've had. We started one in 2000, review in 2015, and then one again here in 2023, where those minimums and maximums in terms of grades were reviewed by an independent consultant, and then ultimately are situated where they are now. The manner in which our employees proceed through the minimum to the maximum are through COLAs, cost of living adjustments, that occur annually during the fiscal year. That's typically determined by the cost of living, the CPI, and the market. We always look at our market, our geographical position, communities, in terms of what those cost of living wages are, and we, we try to be competitive in terms of those particular components. The other way that classification can move through their wage scale is by found that in between pay plans for, or pay studies, that there may be some positions that may have grown non-competitive in the market, that needed adjustment. This open range allows for that study to be done and, and move those positions, if they're below the market average, to move from minimum to maximum through that pay schedule. People in those positions also can be promoted. There is a promotional matrix that we use that allows people in those classifications to progress up through the, the pay scale. That's all I have. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer those.
Member Mascosa?
Yes. Thank you so much for the presentation.
You're welcome.
And this also might be a conversation with requests for a few different cities, just to try to understand their pay as well. And when I looked at our numbers, we have, now, my numbers might not be 100% correct, but the idea is, we have like 17 employees that are making 3.4 million, and then we have our bottom 200 that are only receiving 7.8 million. Now, I know we're not comparing apples and oranges. I know the bottom 200, that could be crossing guards, you know, 911 operators, people who maybe aren't full-time. So, my concern also is about the COLA, and that could be something we have. I, I was looking at, you know, a tiered COLA. Tom said I might be crucified for mentioning that. But I just want to discuss with you just how we can make sure that our employees are getting a, a competitive salary, that we're keeping them here. Some of the things that I've heard, just to be honest, is that there have been employees who've been with us for a while, and then someone comes in, brand new, without kind of the longevity, and they're getting a higher rate. So, these are kind of little things I, I would like to discuss, but I appreciate you bringing this up and kind of giving us this over to look at, at the different data, and your presentation was very helpful as well.
Sure. So, and that's a good point. We often have to deal with compression, where some of our tenured employees bump up against some of the least longevity or at least tenured employees. And there are times, particularly during union negotiations, we, we have, we have to relieve that compression. Okay? There are times that that compression exists, and I remember over our last pay study, we, we did a hybrid methodology whereby we took into account not only the employee's tenure, longevity with the city, but their tenure with their classification. With that methodology, it was costly, but it allowed those people that you expressed some concern, where the newer and the, and the tenured employees are compressed, allows that expansion to occur. So, we took that into account at, at our.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dinaro. Member Stokel?
Yes. Yeah, and that's always a tricky thing, because when you do the pay plan study, because we were part of one of them that was conducted, it's, you do have employees that are, you feel are underpaid, and so then when we bump it up, they are getting the salary, and then when we hire a new person, they're similar. And so, you have to account for that, and then it always comes to budget, into what is our mileage rate, and how are we going to fund that. Could you explain what the range spread percentage means for us on that column?
So, right, that, that is the difference between the minimum and the maximum. So, if, if you use a 2% COLA between the minimum and the maximum, to get to that 60% would take you about 30 years?
Okay, okay. And that was going to be my other question.
And the midpoint would be a 15-year range, and then our consultant also subdivided the minimum and maximum range within quartiles. So, you had the 25%, 50% quartile, so.
What, what do we do if somebody is on the high end in the COLA, if they were to get a COLA, would push them above the maximum? Do they just not get the COLA, or what happens then?
Good question. Our, our method is that, once you reach the maximum, you'd preclude you from getting a pay raise. So, if your COLA, for example, or your pay was, let's say it was 3%, or we typically convert that percentage to a dollar amount, and you would get that equivalent in a dollar amount. So.
As like a lump sum?
Yes.
Okay, okay.
Correct.
Okay.
It doesn't preclude you from getting a rate that to a dollar amount.
Okay. So, that probably impacts pension and benefits like that, so you're not.
No, absolutely.
Okay. And then, do our contract employees, I'm guessing they fall under the non-graded as well?
Yes.
Okay, so they wouldn't be in here?
That's correct.
And then, the last question, and you touched on this too, which I appreciate about the different levels, do we have some type of formal succession planning, plan in place for different departments? Is it kind of just a culture thing? Do we have anything like that?
Sure. I'll, I'll respond in public works, for example. In, in public works, Mr. Cook did a broadbanding of some of those service worker classifications. So, if you look at the service worker classifications, those classifications formally existed as service workers, equipment operate, light equipment, medium, and heavy equipment. The ranges now have been transitioned to a public works tech 1 through 5. You would proceed from a public works tech 1 to a 5 is by acquiring certain knowledge, by certain skills, and by certain certifications. For example, someone who comes in as a public works tech 1 may not have his or her CDL, but acquires their CDL, and then, once they acquire that skill, then they move up into that next band of, of, of classic. The paramilitary organizations, fire and police, have their own succession plan.
Okay.
Where they go from corporal to be promoted to sergeant to lieutenant, as well as, in the non-union, we have that as well. You know, we're, we have foremen, and we have, could be promoted to supervisors, who could be promoted then to managers. So, there's upward mobility based on someone's motivation and, and skill. We have a great tuition assistance program where employees can take advantage of that to, for their upward mobility as well.
Yep. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Stokel. Member Mascosa, did you have anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dinaro.
Thank you.
City manager?
Next item is 4C, the evaluation appraisal report, which is required every seven years, and our community development director has a presentation.
While you get set up, Mr. Eddie, I have a question for the legal services, Mr. Stokes. Once we get, you know, towards our 6:30 start time, what would be your recommendation? Do we trudge on, or we table it? You know, I know we have a time-certain start for city council meeting.
No, my, I mean, it would be acceptable for you to continue this meeting, the 6:30 meeting, and, and we can announce it at 6:30, you know, in case anyone's just showing up or just tuning in, saying, you know, we're still finishing our 5:30 meeting, the 6:30 meeting will start, you know, after that. So, just, I'd say make an announcement at 6:30.
Thank you very much. All right, the floor is all yours, sir.
Thank you, Mayor. That's a lot of pressure to try to get this wrapped up in this meeting and not have to continue on.
I didn't say how to get done. There's other things after.
Okay, so, like was mentioned, this is item 4C, the evaluation and appraisal report, or the EER. The state of Florida requires local jurisdictions to determine whether any updates to its comprehensive plan are required to reflect changes in state requirements since its last update. This evaluation is required at least once every seven years through the evaluation and appraisal reporting process. The last EER assessment was completed in 2018. The presentation of this report is a community engagement opportunity associated with the current evaluation period, which is currently underway and scheduled to be completed in 2025. The transmittal public hearings, which, let me pause to explain, so tonight is just a presentation and soliciting feedback from council and from the public. And then, the transmittal public hearings, which is when we'll ask for a vote, will give us permission from you all to send this to the state for review, and that's to a couple of different departments. And so, tonight, the feedback that we gather will be used to make some further tweaks, and then we'll bring this back in August, which I have the dates here as August 20th for Planning and Zoning Commission, and August 26th for city council. One last thing to mention before I turn things over to the Kimble Horn staff, is that we had a public workshop with Planning and Zoning Commission previously on June 6th, and we had members of the public there, and solicited some good feedback from there as well. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Eliza Harris Giuliano and Emily Thomas.
Thank you, Eddie. Thank you, Mayor and city council, for having us tonight. Well, as Eddie said, we're going to be talking about, we're going to be talking about the evaluation and appraisal process of the comprehensive plan and the associated updates. So, we're going to talk a little bit about the comprehensive plan, I'll, I'll go fast, because Eddie mostly covered it. And then, we're going to get into the meat of what's actually being proposed. Just at a high level, much of what we're talking about is driven by the state statutes. So, this is, but there are some, also some things that are community-driven, based on prior public engagement efforts and input. And so, we'll go through those updates, and then also, we did have a presentation to the Planning and Zoning Commission, so we'll be going through the feedback that was received both from the commission and the public during that meeting. So, at a very basic level, a comprehensive plan is a policy document that coordinates land use, the economy, and the infrastructure investments that the city makes to try to create a synergy that makes the city a superior. The outside is the 20 years, and the state actually requires you to look at the 10-year and the 20-year. The, one of the things that the comprehensive plan does is, as, start as a basis for the, the land development code or the zoning code. So, the detailed standards within the land development code essentially are implementing the policies within the comprehensive plan. The EER is that every seven-year process, it's man-plan at any time, going through the appropriate process, so it's not limited to every seven years, it just has to be done at least every seven years. And during this And during this seven-year review, we are to look at both the existing and changing conditions within the community, as well as changes in state law that have happened that have not yet been incorporated into the comprehensive plan. So now let's get into the updates. So one of the important things we do as part of this evaluation is look at anticipated growth. We look at the state agency, the Bureau of Economic and Business Research for the numbers. And so you can see within, at 2025, the population is just under 51,000, and we're anticipating by 2050 that that population could be just over 56,000. So about a $5,000, 5,000-person difference in the number of residents within the county. One of the exercises that's required by the state is to ensure that that anticipated population can be accommodated by the policies within the comprehensive plan, specifically the future land use map, which you see on the right of the image. The good news is that the comprehensive plan, as it stands today, is already sufficient to absorb that population. So there's not a need to change the comprehensive plan in terms of the future land use that's allowed in order to meet that state requirement. We also looked at the existing land uses, and there's more detail within the evaluation document. But the top two land uses by acreage are vacant and single-family residential. As part of this evaluation, we will also look at the levels of service to determine whether the infrastructure can handle the anticipated growth. So looking at both parks and recreation, sewer and potable water, and transportation, all of the, all of those are still within the limits of what is, what would work essentially for the existing capacity serves the anticipated population through that date. So now we're going to move into the required updates per the Florida statutes, and I'll hand it over to Emily.
Thank you. There are several required updates to the comprehensive plan based on recent legislation within the state of Florida, starting with the removal of a policy which is no longer permitted under SB 180. Additionally, there is some updates to the public school element to clarify that the city must provide a dollar-for-dollar credit for developments which contribute to school-related improvements as a part of the proportionate share mitigation agreement, as well as some additional detail about notification requirements from the school board. Additionally, there's going to be a big update to the infrastructure element, which requires the addressing of septic-to-sewer conversions within BMAP areas in order to reduce pollutants into impaired waters. In addition to these required updates, there are several recommended updates that are based on state legislation in order to better align with the existing goals of the city or to provide further clarification, which have been enabled by these new, this new legislative. The housing element related to accessory dwelling units, which is supportive of some of the housing goals, as well as capital improvements. We are recommending just adding some language to provide better clarity related to annual reporting requirements, as well as the adoption of a mobility plan and fee to fund transportation improvements. We are also, sorry, a policy enabling the city to provide a waiver for the provision of affordable housing. Within the future land use element, we are recommending additional policies to strengthen the coordination between the city and state programs related to historic preservation, specifically with the historic cemeteries program. In 2021, some comments were received from ECF RPC, which we are proposing to incorporate with this update, including updating outdated references, particularly in relation to sea level rise projections, and adding some details about the different benefits and purposes that open space can serve, such as recreation or conservation, sometimes both. And as well as considering the way that we assess wetland impacts, to consider different elements such as changing flood conditions. And we have some recommendations for the transportation elements, which can be achieved through several ways, one of which is providing or supporting alternative modes of transportation, such as biking and walking, and increasing safety by reducing access points, particularly at trail crossings, to minimize conflicts between pedestrians, trail users, and vehicles, and improving connectivity through improved internal site circulation. And now I'll give it back to Eliza to discuss some of our past community engagement.
So the first public engagement effort I'm going to talk about is Titusville Tomorrow. The, this is actually one that I was privileged to be a part of with the city, you know, several years back in 2017. Like, there's a little bit, okay. I don't know if you're trying to tweak the volume. There is a, this is a vision plan that established goals, both generalized goals for the city as well as specific and the downtown, as well as the gateways. And these were basically the highlighted priorities based on community input. There have already been updates to the comprehensive plan implementing much of the Titusville Tomorrow vision goals, particularly those goals around downtown, around the gateway corridors, as well as specific updates to the transportation and housing elements. Updates for cannaberal heights that originated from that plan are currently under review and actually are anticipated, have scheduled transmittal hearings. So those are not part of this update, but they're on a separate track. The one element from the vision plan that hadn't really been addressed in depth yet was the waterfront piece. So we've proposed a number of policies to implement that throughout the comprehensive plan. Specifically within the future land use element, we're recommending establishing an objective related to enhancing the as well as for mic maintenance? Is that it? So the, yeah, so specifically looking at the waterfront, an objective to, I can talk loud, I just assume we want the public record to include the presentation. So for the public waterfront, the goal really here is to expand access to the waterfront, whether that's through public acquisition and public investment, partnerships. So if there's going to be any sort of development, not to allow new development on the waterfront, but if there's going to be development that is waterfront adjacent moving forward, things like having restaurants or boardwalks, those kinds of things in partnership with the private sector can expand the public access to the waterfront. So establishing policies to support those kinds of improvements are recommended within the future land use element. There's also a policy recommended within the transportation element, specific to a continuous waterfront trail, which was a significant part of the vision plan. The second prior public engagement effort that we're looking at is the natural resources public engagement. And that, the overall goal of that was to look at how the city can prioritize natural resource protection. The topic areas included water quality, of course, focusing on the Indian River Lagoon, in general, aging infrastructure, tree canopy and preservation, land acquisition and conservation, as well as wetlands and flood plains. As noted in that plan, there are many policies already within the comprehensive plan that support many of the goals and strategies within the natural resource protection document. But we identified a number of remaining policies that could be addressed through part of this process. So those policies are, and in some cases, a number of these policies actually support efforts the city is already undergoing or standards that are already within the land development code, but they're not reflected in the comprehensive plan. So having them in the comprehensive plan reiterates the importance of these things, makes it so that essentially they are, they're stronger. So those include expansion of the urban tree canopy and establishment of an urban forest management plan. This is an effort already underway within the city. Continued participation in the Tree City USA program, which supports tree preservation and planting. Updating policies related to native plants and adding policies related to Florida-friendly landscaping. Then the last two here are maintaining an inventory of green spaces. And finally, a direction to research and incorporate best practices around conservation of wetlands based on quality and importance. The natural resource protection document raised some questions about that that really, really deserve more attention. And so they can't be solved within this effort, but the direction to spend more time on that and address that.
Can I interrupt you for just a second?
Sure.
I'd just like to make an announcement. We're at 6:31. Normally, our scheduled start time for the regular city council meeting. However, if you're just tuning in or arriving, we're still in our 5:30 special presentations meeting. So once we conclude this meeting, we'll probably take a short recess and then get into a regular city council meeting. So thank you. You have the floor again.
Thank you. So we're going to wrap up here with what we heard within the planning and zoning work session, which included comments both from the members of the Planning and Zoning Commission as well as members of the public. We didn't hear any objections to the proposed policies. We did hear support for, any changes we made, we did make some changes following that that were either refinements or additions. So one of the things that we heard was support for policies and amendments that and expansion of green space, as well as preservation specifically of native vegetation. So that was one of the drivers for really beefing up and refining that language around native vegetation within the policies, as well as adding the language. Also heard about a desire for what was referred to in the meeting as medium-density housing and a variety of housing types. We didn't see a need to create an update in response to that because that's really already pretty well addressed within current policies in both the future land use and housing elements. The importance of historic preservation was something that was mentioned at the meetings. And in response to that, we really dug into the historic preservation policies and made sure that those were reflective of the best that was available, particularly of those changes in state statute. We heard some discussion about growth. So these two, these two sections are really related. And essentially, one of the questions that was asked was, well, this is the amount of growth that's projected. Some people were concerned that more growth might happen than what's projected. And there's a couple of answers to that. One is that the growth projections really are very much in line with what the city has seen. The city hasn't been growing terribly fast. So fast growth would be out of, out of what we've seen in the recent past. But as I said at the beginning, the city doesn't have to wait seven years to update its comprehensive plan. So if that changes, the city has the option to update its comprehensive plan in response to that at any time. And specifically, as it relates to some of that infrastructure analysis, the existing potable water, as we said, and sewer support the projected growth, but the water supply plan is updated even more frequently. It's updated every five years. And also, if it, if you were in a situation where there wasn't enough water or sewer capacity to support those developments, the development permits would not be able to move forward. So there are backstops in place where, you know, if these projections are not perfect, there are still mechanisms within the planning. We also had questions about stormwater, which is addressed within the conservation element. So this slide really just kind of summarizes what we talked about, that some of the changes are required, some of them are recommended based on the statutory changes. And then there's a number of other sources of updates based on the regional planning council, research on access management best practices, particularly as it relates to trail crossings, and these prior public efforts. And with that, I yield to the mayor.
Thank you very much. City Council, you have any questions? Member Nelson?
I don't know that this is a question. This is a comment. One of the things that I was interested in was wildlife corridors. Have we considered that?
Not in the recent, not in the recent past.
Okay. Is this something maybe we should consider?
I don't know that it's anything that's currently addressed in the comp plan, so it'd be an addition, and that could be done. It would probably take more analysis and might be more appropriate as a separate comp plan amendment adjustment
Okay.
to add that language.
And then the second question that sort of bothered me as I was going through it, years ago, we were talking about wetlands out on Helen Hauser. And we had one piece of property that had, I don't know, 2.4 acres of wetland, and adjacent to it was like three acres of wetland. So I was interested in seeing if we could give those wetlands equal protection. In that case, the wetlands were poor quality, but if they were, yeah, worth, worth having, then shouldn't they be protected?
Yes, Mayor, I remember that site well. It was primarily lower quality wetlands compared to the surrounding site. That, we have some wetland policy guidance to direct us to look more into how to protect wetlands. So that, with the proposed language, that would help our current situation with the policy kind of being very black and white.
So maybe later on tonight, we should ask for a clarification of the policies.
What's that? Are you asking?
Or that, that staff will be clarifying the policies.
Got it. So, yeah, just to, just to reiterate, one of the, one of the proposed policies is further study to really address that issue holistically in terms of the current practice. I'd certainly defer to staff.
So I don't need to say that, right? Okay.
Thank you very much, Member Nelson. Member Stokoe?
Yes. So are you looking for feedback now before you start drafting the proposed policies for the comp plan changes? Or what's our next step, I guess?
Sure. So next steps, just a reminder, this was a public engagement opportunity, so we're soliciting feedback.
Okay.
After this will be the transmittal, which is tentatively scheduled for August 20th with P&amp;Z, Planning and Zoning Commission, and August 26th with the city council. And then after that, if that's moved forward, it'll go for review by the state, and we'll address any comments, and then bring it back for you for an adoption vote.
Okay. So when you say transmittal, what are you guys submit? Is that ready to submit? Are you presenting something that's ready to submit now? Because what went over is like recommended, but is this like final? Are we getting something separate before?
At this stage, you will not get anything separate. We, after the feedback we received during the Planning and Zoning Commission workshop, there were some modifications made. And then any modification, any feedback we receive tonight that we want to, that we can add some clarity or modification, further modification to, then that'll be what we present to you during the transmittal hearing in August.
That makes sense. And then a couple of things that I had, I appreciated P&amp;Z's feedback. I thought it was pretty consistent with my thoughts. I wasn't really a fan of the recommendation to waive impact fees for affordable housing. I personally wouldn't want to see that. And I feel like they're already limiting us with live local. And I wouldn't want to put that feedback on our other residents. And then to kind of what Member Nelson was saying, anything that we can do for conservation and wetlands and that protection, I would definitely want to see in there. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much, Member Stokoe. Looking at your analysis of our water supply, you know, as, you know, compared to projected growth, are you guys, 81 gallons a day per person? That's how you guys did your calculation?
So the calculations are based on the adopted level of service within the comprehensive plan. So we had, at this time, had not made recommended changes to the level of service in the comprehensive plan. We calculated it based on the existing adopted level of service.
81 gallons a day seems like a lot to me.
I mean, must, a significant amount, half of water is typically used on irrigation, but, so it's definitely not all in the house.
Okay. I was just curious because I was just like, that's a lot of water.
Yeah, and we can certainly take a look at that as compared to other.
I'm not saying change it. I'm just, it just seemed like a lot of water to me. But, you know, we're producing 6.5 million gallons of water a day currently. That's a lot of water. Trust me, I try not to look at my water bill. Any other questions from council? All right. Thank you very much, guys. Appreciate you.
City Manager?
Next, on the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility, also an update on some water sampling test results.
Mr. Cook, I'd recommend you use the other mic. This seems to work a little This seems to work a little bit better.
Watch, it's gonna be perfect.
Yeah.
Good evening. If I could get the presentation pulled up, we'll get started on this one. I think you all should have the presentation, just to be forewarned, I did put animation in it, so you may have static images. But, so, we're going to talk about the Osprey Water Reclamation Facility, which opened in September of 1960 for sewage operations. It was the first purpose-built plant that was the start of the sewer expansion for the city of Tysseville. The city had purchased some packaged plants throughout the surrounding communities, but this was the, the start of the expansion of the sewer system. So, today, we'll go briefly over the Osprey Reclamation Facility, and then specifically into how we respond to water quality concerns and the Osprey Pond Investigation. So, so, original pictures from 1970-ish of the Osprey facility, when it was the far lower right-hand side was drying beds that used to dry the sewage after it was treated, and it overflowed into the pond to the south as part of its original permitting. This time, the city was purchasing the property to the west. This is the addition of the reclaim system. The two tanks added, one is the reclaim and one is the reject for any water quality that doesn't meet reclaim. This was also the end of the discharge of the Osprey facility into the river. Its permit changed. And somebody's on here now stuck. I can go backwards. All right. This is, structures added in the late 2000s. This is the final version of it that has the addition in the south side of the BNR facility, which was completed about three years ago, which is the advanced treatment for nitrogen phosphorus, the additional step in the treatment process. So, currently, this plant treats about 80, sorry, 45% of the city's water, sewage supply. The Blue Heron has started to take on more. So, in the last five years, it was closer to 50, but this year dropped about 45% of the load comes through this plant. It is a smaller of the two facilities, but they are interconnected for the discharge of the reuse system. And Osprey can use the wetlands for an ultimate outfall if it needs it. Just stepping through the process, everything enters through the pretreatment facility. This is a, there's no gravity feed to this plant. It's all under pressure, feeds out to the BNR step, lanes in its rehydration basins, works out to the clarifiers. It takes away the solids, separates solids from the system, ultimately landing in the chlorine contact chambers before it goes through the filter system, ultimately to the reuse storage. Reuse storage feeds out to our citizens, so we supply reuse to most of the air critical concern. Both rolloke golf courses are no longer sent to rolloke now that's no longer used. And then, the great outdoors also use our reuse system, but it pulls directly from our wetlands. Just touch briefly over the history, trending of capacity. Capacity of the plant is greatly influenced by the rains it gets, but as you can see by this, we're about 82% in 2017. Last year, we finished about 80%. So, it does cycle up and down depending on the weather patterns. And this is an annual average daily flow treated through the plant. The top line at 2.75 million gallons is our max capacity of the plant for its average daily flow for its permitting. Just to give you an idea of what happens when it rains, the blue line is rainfall. The green line is the average daily flow coming through the Osprey facility. So, when we have heavy rainfall events like we had in August, in September of last year, the plant peaks out above 4 million gallons a day. The daily maximum is about nine and a quarter million gallons that it can be hiccups in the process as it takes on more rainfall. We spent about $2 million ARPA funds to start lining lines and lining manholes, putting rain barrels, rain guards in the manhole tops to try to help with this occurrence. Once the, we can keep the rainfall from getting in the system, the variations will smooth So, part of our recent re-permitting that we just did, wrapped up last year, they got our permits renewed for this year. We had our consultant go through, and they're required to make a recommendation on our capacity. Part of this process is anything they find that we need to address, we have to sign that we agree fiscally to take it on in the five-year cycle. So, this is just a statement that's included in there, just simply stating that by 2032, we expect the total maximum daily to exceed the annual, and they recommended taking on infill and infiltration reductions during that time period, and the expectation that in the next five-year cycle, we would have to look at the expansion, sorry, during the next 10-year cycle for AADF. The other part that they did for us, and this was done by Meaden Hunt, this is their view of the, through every treatment process and give us a grade between good and not, and poor. And they grade out every part and piece in the system to make sure they're in good working condition for DEP's review. At this time, we had two items that they labeled as marginal. Both, one of the RES pumps was transferred reuse from the chlorine contact chambers to the distribution tank, and our secondary filtration system, which is a sand filter backflow, backwash, sorry. We've already replaced the tank, the pump that was out of future project to take a look at replacing the sand filters with a different type of filter. And just a bottom statement, that is a note, they do make a general statement, the plant is in good condition to meet all requirements of the Florida Administrative Code for operation. To give you an idea of what we had in our 10-year plan that you recently saw, our, our rate projections for the future, Osprey specifically has about $2.3 million for the projects. We want to separate the reject tank from the reuse tank so that they can be shut down for operational purposes as we need them. The building itself has become aged and needs, pretty well needs to be replaced and not overhauled completely. We do want to replace the de-watering system with better technology and more reliability, some other rehabbing into the digestion system. We do also, by 2032, we have to eliminate in both plants, the surface discharge is the Addison Canal. It is our ultimate overflow for the wetland that the state mandates by 2032, you have to be using 90% of your reuse within this, your system. Right now, Osprey meets that goal, but we do want to give it a little extra help by looking at the ability to putting in a ASR system that will allow to be pumped into the ground and stored, or just pumped into the ground for disposal purposes. It operates about 91% in 2025. We also anticipate during this 10-year period to look at the reaps and expansion study to see if that's viable or needed. And then, we have various operating projects that are housed in the operating budget that take care of pump replacements and pieces and parts. Give you an idea of if this plant, which was, I think, built for $390,000 in the original concept of 1960, if it had to be replaced today, the plant itself is about a $33 million investment just to get its treatment capacity. If it were to go up, I would truly put in 4.75, would be roughly $57 million. The forced main to connect it to Blue Heron would range between two and six, depending on how it's done. And ultimately, because this plant is the ultimate destination for a bunch of sewage, there would have to be a large lift station built at the site to push that to wherever the future site would be. So, you're looking at a range of 48 to 77 million if that plant had to be completely rebuilt or relocated from its current location. And just to move on to the water quality concerns and how we respond to them. August to September 2023, we were doing some sampling on the river at both Scobee Park and Space View Park over some concerns of water quality to help us assist with sampling and determination of cause and if human waste was present. One of the things we also tasked them with was to come up with a blueprint of how we handle this in the future. Prior to that, it was interpretation of rules. It was efforts to do testing on our own. Instead, we wanted to get a real plan for how we step-by-step address any future concerns for water quality. So, this is the, the sketch of that plan, taking it from first response to ultimately, in the end, where it could have an option if the water is found to be impaired, not by human waste, but in general, going to the state and asking for it to be listed as an impaired waterway if it were state waters. We've used this now twice, both at the Scobee Park that did have good results. We were able to find a pipe actually inside a storm conflict box within a state road that was not lined, that we were able to line and remediate the opportunity of any introduction. And we saw that the testing around it didn't, didn't yield any additional needs of concern there. So, specifically to Osprey, roughly April this year, we responded to staff concern over the condition of the pond outside the Osprey plant. Both in-house staff at the plant, our field ops staff, our administrative staff, all reviewed the area around, looking for any leaks, any signs of clear leakage of pressure piping into the environment around or overflows at the plant. We also brought in our in-house sampling ability for our lab, which can do fecal chloroform and E coli, which are basic sampling we do every day in our plants. Started initial sampling, went through, found no leaks, able to be found in stations that they bordered a pond, and gave those owners an inspection. Both were found to be in good shape directly, directly south of us. So, we completed a four-week cycling period with an outside lab. This water is salt water or brackish water, so our lab is not really set up to test it. So, we switch out to Pace and up in Volusia County to do our testing. We still do the sampling. We cycled back through our inspection process after we completed our first four-week in accordance with the plan. We didn't, still haven't found a cause, so we started the second week of sampling last week. Just to give you some results, and I know this is small on the screen. So, with this testing, you classify everything into three broad categories, good, moderate, and poor. And you also look at the mathematical geometric mean. And in this case, both the pond was considered poor, and the Indian River on the north side of the marina also had a poor water quality. The Indian River to the south of the outfall point had moderate. As you can see, much higher numbers in the first week at all three locations, they kind of went down. The second week, they did various in the, the last week, much higher. This is the second four-week sampling. We have one back at this point. The numbers have all dropped drastically down into the moderate and good range, with both river samples falling. One, the one shown as less than 10 is actually undetectable by the machines, 10 being the detection limit, and then the other one being 10. We expanded the pond testing because technically, for the methodology we're comparing to, you need to have 10 samples in a 30-day period. So, by doing three locations four times in a month, we'll get 12. And that'd be able to categorize the pond into the water quality standard. This standard matches beach testing for the state. The pond itself is not a listed water body, so it's not technically a Class II or III water body. So, as outcome of the pond, the, we had, a primary concern we had was there's still two existing 14-inch forced mains that are scheduled for abandonment with our Indian River Forced Main Project, that when the contractor exited the project, they haven't been done yet. We currently have that out to procurement for our utility contractors to come in and do that. While we haven't seen any leak there, that is the last of our infrastructure that hasn't been addressed, and where it's located in a ditch, it, we, it's hard to tell whether or not it has anything, but we haven't seen anything present in that ditch or in the pond from those forced mains. We did come up with two opportunities for improvement. As part of the recommendation or review from the Scobee and Space View, they recommend sampling all of our major stormwater outfalls twice a year for the introduction of fecal chloroform into those, which will let us know if there's any problems. They also recommended we kind of look at the areas to see where sewer is crossing them, to kind of prioritize those testing. So, we're looking to implement that probably in the next year. And we've already been awarded a SOAR grant to add a solar-powered aeration system to, to the Osprey Pond, which will go in with our existing BMAT, so to help with nitrogen phosphorus uptake by circulating a pond that otherwise is stagnant water predominantly throughout the year. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Member Mascosa?
Thank you, Kevin. I've been out to the plant a few times, and I, I'm so thankful for this presentation. A lot of times, you know, I've had people reach out in the, in the mobile home park next to it and say they think there are issues, and I really appreciate you guys being proactive in not only testing for the four weeks, but going longer for four more weeks and then for sharing the results. I think that's, that's what we need is, even though it, it may seem minor, I think it's just an important concern, and these are the areas we're going to improve on. And if you haven't been out there, it's a great field trip. It, it's really neat, and we have some wonderful workers who are out there. And, and I was just reminded, when there's a hurricane, when there's a storm, these men and women are out there keeping this plant going. And so, it's things you don't think about each day, but I appreciate you sharing this with us and then being open to when I have questions or concerns, to immediately going out and responding. So, thank you so much, Kevin.
Thank you, Member Mascosa, City Council. Seeing none. Thank you very much, Mr. Johnson. All right. And we're still in our 5:30 special presentations meeting, so we're at the end of the agenda right now, before we get into our 6:30 meeting with these petitions and requests from the public non-agenda items.
Mayor, can I ask a question?
Yes, Member Nelson?
Somebody reminded me the other day that I believe the signs are supposed to be in the back of the room. Is that correct?
I believe it is. Mr. Johnson, can you not put the sign so that you're not blocking anybody? Because there's rules that say.
Am I blocking people from?
Hey, I'm just asked to enforce the rules by council.
Say it again. What is it?
I am being asked to enforce the rules by council.
What council, what's rule is it?
The signs are supposed to be in the back of the room.
No, you said, I'm, I'm wearing this sign. This is part of my clothes.
I understand that.
So, I.
I understand that.
No, I'm wearing this. Okay? All right. So, are, are you ready for me to speak?
I am, Mr. Johnson.
Okay, may I have a talk, spark? Okay. My concern is something is that everybody should listen to this, listen up, is when I flush my toilet, when I flush my toilet, I don't want it to go to Sand Park or Space View Park and being put in fountains in the air and sprayed on women, children, and babies. I do not want my piss and poop sprayed on people. I'm serious. But, we have a problem here. We have a problem as council. Four out of five council members have continually approved the spraying of women, children, and babies with my piss and poop, beginning December 2020. I don't think anybody heard me. I do not, when I flush my toilet, I do not want my toilet, my piss and my poop being put on women and children and babies, these innocent people. Yet, four out of five council members have said what? Four out of five council members, and the last city manager. So, what have I done? I have asked our new city manager, this guy right here, Tom Abadi. Is that right? Yes. I, I've asked him, I said, "Mr. Abadi, what do you think? What do you think, Mr. Abadi? Should the city leave the fountains turned on or off?" So, what does he say to me? What does he say? He says he will check with Kevin Cook. You would think that an adult would be able to under, to, to be able to say, "No." But, he's like, so, so I asked Kevin Cook, "Has, has Mr. Abadi talked to you?" "No." Kevin Cook has told me privately that indeed, this is not right. It's harmful to, to take my piss and poop from my toilet and put it on women, children, and babies. Yet, four out of five council members have said, "Yes, let's put Stan's poop and piss on our, on my neighbors." I don't appreciate it one bit. And I've asked Megan Mascosa to, 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 to check with Mr. Abadi, and she still hasn't done it. She still hasn't done it. So, we still have the condition that it is okay, the city of Tysseville is the only city in the world that deliberately sprays, when with piss and poop, deliberately does, only city in the world. And I'm, it seems like I'm only one of the people who, who disapprove of it. But, Mr. Carter's approves of it even before he became mayor. Thank you, Tom. I wish, I would think it'd be nice if you would answer the question.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Pardon?
I said, "Thank you, Mr. Johnson."
Okay. You're welcome. You're in my prayers.
You're mine.
Thank you.
Anybody else from petitions and requests?
Hi, guys. Good evening. Thank you for having me out. My name's Derek Cale. I'm a Tysseville resident, born and raised. I live up in, live up in Memes now. I'd like to bring attention to the council about a previously deemed completed project. It was the BMX course right over here near our skate park. And I'm curious, I had a PowerPoint that I built up, didn't know if I could show it to the evening, or this evening, realized that I could not, but wanted to get any idea from council as far as what project underway. You know, I, I understand, I think I actually met with Mr. Cook years ago, probably six, seven years ago, trying to get an understanding of, you know, what opportunity we might have and what was done with that project previous. and what was done with that project previously to appease those individuals that were looking to get it done. So I would just look to the council as far as what recommendations would you give me to kind of start that process and maybe get your backing on, you know, something that would benefit our community of all, you know, of all ages. A number of other communities throughout central Florida have put something in long-term, like an asphalt pump track, that would give not only the opportunity to alleviate some of our public works from mowing that field that is literally unused right now, relevance, and giving, giving the community something to use. Do you guys have any, any recommendations on which direction I should go?
Well, thank you very much for, for coming in. My understanding, track that was developed, but maybe not to the level of specifications that would have enticed people to use it, and I don't know at that time if it was a budgetary issue or maybe just an execution issue, but, you know, for our conversation earlier, I just recommend, you know, reach out to us individually, share us your ideas for how to do that, and then I know we'll probably get with our city manager and Parks and Rec, because the county actually maintains our parks, so, you know, kind of, that would be my recommendation.
Okay, awesome, I have sent the four council members an email, I'm going to follow up that email with my PowerPoint presentation in hopes of just showing it to you guys as far as what I think the project could benefit the community. Thank you so much, I appreciate it.
Anybody else from petitions or requests?
Yes, I'd like to start out by saying thank you to the council for being here. So my name is James Erdman, I'm born and raised local right here in North Brevard, and it's been a tragedy watching there where we grew up and get destroyed by corruption and overdevelopment every year. And there's been big rumors flying around about the city of Tidesville wanting to annex as much land as they can. Is there any truth to them?
We have a voluntary annexation program here.
If that becomes, rumor becomes true, will it be up to the public to vote on it?
I believe that's how the process works.
Again, we have, we have no plans to, to do involuntary annexations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Christina Michelle, on July eighth, entered on the record, more than a thousand voices strong, more than a thousand voices signed in support of the petition created in response to the murder of Tremari Charles. A young black man chased, shot ten times in the back with more than sixteen bullets fired by Tidesville Police Department. Officer Chivas Baez, responsible for the murder of Tremari Charles, has an extensive history of misconduct, use of excessive force, police brutality with a deadly weapon, and fabrication of evidence since starting and transferring from the Cocoa Police Department in the year twenty twenty. The petition represents a collective voice of citizens calling not only for transparency and account of value of black lives and public safety. Activist, community leader, friend, family, and comrade Dwight Seigler shared to Facebook, a social site that many citizens of Tidesville and Brevard County have experienced targeted cyber harassment on. Particularly, I'm speaking on the weaponization of the Tidesville Police Department's usage of taxpayer dollars for the censorship and illegal surveillance of community members with the involvement of city officials, including election interference, for example, Mayor Connors, October twenty twenty-four. Dwight Seigler shared. Officer Baez of Tidesville Police Department, December eleventh, twenty eighteen, Baez fired six rounds through his patrol car windshield, striking the caller to nine-one-one in the elbow. The victim had no weapon, the object in his hand was a cellphone, not a gun. The F D L E investigated and ruled that the man had a handgun. Baez was placed on paid administrative leave and returned to duty in February twenty nineteen, with a disciplinary record that only grew. June eleventh, twenty twenty-one, he backed his patrol car into a parked sedan after moving his seatbelt, another avoidable incident on his record. April sixth, twenty twenty-two, Baez failed to respond to multiple radio calls, vehicle on foot, prompting unnecessary concern and gathering of other officers. September twenty-first, twenty twenty-two. I'm running out of time.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody else, petitions or requests from the public? We're not, we will adjourn once I get a motion to adjourn, and we will, make a motion.
Motion to adjourn.
All right, I have a motion to adjourn the special city councils and presentations meeting, and then we will. I was going to let everybody know that we will be taking a ten-minute break and we'll reconvene at seven-twenty. Thank you.